Okay folks, you gotta get just one big talk for a little demo time. John, let's go right down. January. Number one, capital stabilization is cut back from ninety-nine thousand to fifty thousand dollars. Everybody understand that?
So that's a yes.
That's a yes.
Okay.
John?
I agree.
Two.
Do you, excuse me. Do you want to know tonight how FinCom has voted because we had our meeting? Do you want to know that information tonight?
We have to wrap it up because we have to have it posted or you won't have a time.
I'm asking you a question. Do you want to know what our vote was tonight? So that's a-
Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah. How about you go Mark and then then we'll go make the recommendation.
So we recommended that, Article One.
Article One.
We recommended Article One.
Okay.
Two. Eighty-four thousand dollars for animal control building project. And Article Three concerns the same issue. We've had that discussion. It's warrants town share for the new animal control building that has, from what I understand, run into a few snags, but we are in the regionalization and that is our fair share of going forward with this project. Article Three, the same thing. We are just transferring amounts that we had in our own account to go into that account to cover the costs involved in the animal control for the town of Mary. Anybody have an issue with that? John?
Okay. FinCom?
Yes on number two, yes on number three.
You? Uh, four, transfer fee cash. Excuse me, for the auction of the fire department equipment. As we all know, that they had the auction, it goes back to the department that handled it. That amount is three thousand, two hundred dollars. John?
Yes, with reservations.
Which are?
Which are in the future. I think we have to take a look at that money as and deem it appropriate for use. I have no problem winning the money back in the fire department, but it should be used to procure equipment in the future. Same with highway department. When we auction off a piece of equipment that belongs to the town, it's appropriate use should be for replacement equipment, whatever that replacement equipment needs to be. And I think we need to state it as such. It's just not to go into a such general fund. It needs to be used towards procurement of other equipment in the future. That's my reservation. Other than that, I see-
For that particular department?
For any department. For any department, any options that we have, it would be for a specific purpose.
Because you know, when we had that discussion a few weeks ago, John, it was basically just okay that this department had the auction, that it should be returned. It really wasn't a lot of discussion.
I agree with-
If you want to find-
The intent, I just think we need to follow that up with future procurement of equipment.
I don't have a problem at all. FinCom?
FinCom suggests that it not be a line item, number one. Number two, we agreed that we felt the thirty-two hundred dollars should either be put into a stabilization account for a said project or go towards the current stabilization project, which is the turnout gear and hose equipment that we have a thirty-nine thousand dollar approximate responsibility for this year that we will be voting on. So we think that we could offset that cost in that article with this thirty-two hundred dollars.
Like I say, you know, I think, again, the intent was to return it to the department, but if further discussion is warranted between yourself and Mr. Littleby.
We agree that it should stay with the department.
Okay.
But we do, we think that it should be directed. So when this comes up on the floor, we are not going to support it being a separate line.
Okay.
It should not be a separate line.
The accountant wanted it a separate line. Would you feel more comfortable, Barry, maybe passing over this and-
I'd like to pass over it only-
And wait till May for some-
Right.
You and the chief and now and Capital can get together and say-
Because it does affect all of us.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, Capital could certainly weigh in on this one and they could set up us yet another stabilization for another selected piece of equipment that might be on his roster.
Okay.
So this could offset that. But to have it out there just in a, in a line, in a budget, we feel it's a misappropriation of funding.
Ashley, you're good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So you want to pass?
Pass. You want to pass? Okay, Article Five, you've been down this road for quite some time. That's to allow Tom to access the seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty cents that was approved from last year's town meeting. That was unfortunately legally worded wrong. We did not have access to that money to pay for the sweeper that he bought to go with the new whack-a-noose. Does anybody have an issue with that? John?
No, just how we got here, but I'm in favor of appropriating the money to pay for it.
Barry?
FinCom approved the, the payment of the seventy-four hundred dollars, whatever it is. But that's only because we feel the vendors do their money. Uh, we feel that Tom certainly did not pay attention to his article. He purchased a piece of equipment without having the funds and we'll talk about that in another meeting.
Well, yes.
Yes, too, yes, too.
Warrant is going to pay.
Yes. Mark, you have a question over here?
Uh, go ahead, Ash.
You said it was last year's meeting. Was that from, it says two thousand seventeen, so was that this past or two years ago?
No, it's this past year.
This past year. It's just the way the fiscal year is.
Okay. But the, but Ashley's right, the article was from seventeen.
It was from two thousand seventeen.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
That is.
But it's up by eighteen.
Right, yeah.
Six, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash or revenue from the town auctions of the higher equipment in the amount of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Towards the purchase price of a new loader with the balance to be raised and appropriated, borrowed, or transferred from available funds to purchase a said new loader or take action. There it is. John?
Okay, maybe a new loader.
FinCom?
Uh, FinCom voted that we feel we need to modify the way that that's worded. Um, that the money be solely for the purchase to go towards the loader. But we voted that it go forward, but we really need to be very specific about what that money is going towards. Because should he not purchase the loader in the year that we're voting on this article? Then that money stands out there in no man's land again.
And you want it allocated to-
Allocated to his project because he said it was urgent. It could technically, if he wanted to, we could do it just like we did the fire department and delegate it to a stabilization account for that loader, which means it could go forward in history and it won't have to be revoted on. So if it said, it says in the, in the, in the actual article and the, and then the motion is written that it go forward so that Tom can have that money as staying in that stabilization towards that loader, then we can offset the cost of that piece of machinery. We'll always have that option.
Because from what I understand now, I think there's still some, some questions of what loader they're looking to purchase.
But having said that-
Is that the question?
No matter which one it is, that core of money that he's retained from auction will still be able to be used towards that equipment. So if we go into the special, everything's in a row, Tom's in agreement, everything, everything is okayed upon. When we go into that special, that money will be there to offset that, that cost.
Anything to add, Tom?
Uh, town needs loader right now.
Yeah, everybody's on the same page as that.
Uh, if, if this loader isn't approved at this special meeting and we get some snow, we're going to be doing a, a large disservice to the town. I know the big, big issue of this was a difference in price of sixteen hundred and forty dollars.
Well, let me start you right there, Tom. Part of the issue that I think the board had is in the last month-
Which board?
This board.
This board approved a cat loader.
Right. And, but since that was approved-
There is no one's, you approved the cat loader.
Yes, we did. But we ended up going back and had that discussion and the price for that seemed to have changed four times in the last month. And I, I was told, and we, during discussions with other people in the building today, we weren't comparing apples to apples. Because one of the issues that the cat loader, that I was just aware of today, was the fact that the bump in the price was for the extras, not the base price of the loader. Forty-five hundred dollars for a spare tire.
Spare tire.
For forks, isn't that, that's what brought that difference to bring that price of the cat so much higher than a loader. And FinCom, Capital Planning, this board is sat there with a very simple opinion that if you're going to get comparable machines, and I can get one for twenty thousand dollars cheaper, that's the one I'm going to buy.
Mm-hmm.
So there has been obviously you in that conversation.
Yeah, there have been some issues with that. You were first one to say that.
Up and down. So it was basically, we all know we want a loader. We all agreed that there's no sense putting any amount of money into a twenty-plus-year-old loader. You people deserve equipment to take care of the town roads, but-
May I speak?
You may speak anytime you want, Tom.
Tom, when we voted on this, I don't want to correct you or not, I think we, we voted on a new loader. We approved that in last week's meeting. What we did, we struck the hydrostatic transmission because that kind of forced you into a cat at that point, so we wanted to leave it open. And based on the information I have is the numbers kept changing. I'm not proficient enough out there to say a cat's better than a Volvo, better than a John Deere. That's not my job. That's not why I'm sitting here. Is, my job is to approve your loader, right? Whatever loader you guys end up choosing, as long as it's the best for the town and reasonable price comparison to what the standard cost for that loader is, I'm okay with it. So whether that's a cat or Volvo, I don't really care. We need a loader. But what financially is best for the town, that's other departments of Capital Planning, uh, FinCom, I have to take their recommendations and their recommendations. If it comes down to a, a cat, it comes down to a cat, right? If it comes down to a Volvo, it comes down to a Volvo. But what we want to do is get the funding available for you to purchase a loader, so.
And the biggest issue is, as you know, Tom, you know, you're adult enough to admit that this has been an issue for quite some time and week after week, the numbers change from this one to this one.
Numbers have changed with Volvo.
And, but the, the whole process, we can't go through this again.
The numbers have changed with the Volvo. This is a piece of equipment that's going to be purchased on a state bid list, which means if we, if we want that particular loader, that's the loader we get. We're confirming it either. I got the other request for, for the quotes for the, per the different boards involved. Was there numbers late getting to? Absolutely. I'll be the first to admit that. But the numbers were late getting to it because this department, as the highway department, wanted a cat loader. With the numbers handed in at different times, the numbers that I presented last week at Capital Planning are the numbers. We're talking a sixteen hundred dollar difference.
Never seen-
I don't care what loader we get. We need a loader.
I, I understand that, but that's, that seems to be the issue, Tom, is because last week when we were sitting here, there was no, the difference in the numbers towards twenty thousand, not sixteen hundred. I think that would have made a huge difference on how this board-
Difference was never twenty thousand.
Pardon me?
The difference was never twenty thousand.
It was stated at this meeting publicly, on camera.
It was a week ago. That it was a twenty thousand dollar difference?
Twenty thousand, and that's why the board looked at, were looking at apples and apples.
Can you show me that in writing where there's a twenty thousand dollar difference?
Well, the difference was, was it wasn't explained or, or noted or brought to the attention that, that big jump in price was because you were buying the attachments.
There was no twenty thousand dollar difference though.
Well, it, it was stated at this meeting. I'm not going to sit here and say who said it and who this, but it's on camera.
Then it was stated falsely.
Yes, well, but that's, the point is that that was the information that this board received. And this board was not aware that forty-five hundred dollars was that, was a spare tire. The board was under the impression that this loader versus this loader for comparable machines was twenty thousand dollars higher.
But I think you had to do a trade-in value too. I think we were getting a better trade-in from one company versus the other or something.
Like I say, it just changed from week to week. Go ahead, Ash.
No, I was just going to say, I think I said that and that was based on, you know, we were looking at like-
On the information that you received?
-different quotes that we got, that we received. You know, there was one quote we got at one point that was fifty thousand dollars more than the other one for the same machine, though.
Exactly.
So there was different things. So we were saying there was, you know, potentially a twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
So there was, you know, any, it wasn't, um, any facts. We were going based on the information we had that this is out there, whether or not it was true or what the differences were.
And that's what the board has to make-
We didn't have any detail on it.
You know, we have to rely on the information due to the board and when you're looking at it, all we look at is the dollar signs.
Right. And that's all we had and that came to the top. So, you know, so just to be clear, it wasn't a fabricated or made-up number.
Well, we are going forward with this article, FinCom, correct?
Yes, with those revisions.
But is it going to be raised and appropriate?
Correct. That's my question.
Because raised and appropriate doesn't give money to the access till after July 1st, which means you're not going to have a loader this year.
Which is a waste of money. Because I got records here from just the snow removal last year, just snow removal with the loader for the hours that we worked it, based on a hundred and twenty-five bucks an hour, is-
I don't think we need, want to shut down the other options. Raised and appropriate puts us into the next tax year.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and I don't think we can-
Forty-three hundred dollar difference. So if we do snow removal, last year we did snow removal on four days. It was thirty-five hours at a hundred and twenty-five bucks an hour. It's forty-three hundred bucks that we throw away. And that was last year. We got squat for snow last year.
Hopefully we can squat for snow this year.
It's too early to say.
I know, it's way too early.
Way too early. The biggest storms usually don't come for another couple of weeks, so.
The point being is we need a new loader.
Absolutely.
Right? And regardless of what road is finally decided on as far as what make and model it is or where the money comes from, I think this kind of leaves it open with some wiggle room. So if you come back a month from now and say, oh gee, I made a mistake, you know, I heard a lot of bad things about that cat, still leaves it open for you to get a Volvo or a John Deere or whatever.
Then let's buy the Volvo.
Right?
I, I really don't care right now.
I don't care.
But I have to go home every night with the conscience that if there's a fire and there's snowdrifts on Coy Hill and the fire truck can't get up there, that house burns down.
I'm saying the article as written-
If there's a medical call at one of our houses-
Hold on a second.
And we can't get there, that person could die.
The article as written gives you the flexibility to move around, right?
Not if it's raised and appropriate.
Again, it says raised and appropriate, transfer, borrow. So it leaves it open for you to access the money. We need to get it whichever way. We need to get it, right?
So this is just for posting purposes?
Right, we, we have to legally post this or we have no meaning.
The motion will be specific.
It's been done by tomorrow. So as John says, he, he's going to leave you that option. All we are doing is to make sure that there is a article for your loader on this special town meeting.
But with clarity that the fourteen nine thirty is going to be transferred from free cash towards just specific for the purchase of a new loader.
Now, is that fourteen nine thirty, the auction money?
Yes.
So we will go forward with the article.
And then the rest is, will be decided on.
So do you need a new article tomorrow then or with?
No, we have to get it done so we can post it. So then we can come back six weeks and say, okay, this is what, FinCom, this is what, treasury, you know. But unless we put this literally on a piece of paper outside on that bulletin board, you guys are going to get nothing.
Sort of put it on the paper.
That's the whole purpose of it.
So, FinCom, are you okay with that?
This, this article does not address correctly the, the purchase of a new loader. The way this is worded is all towards the fourteen nine thirty. This is not an article for a new loader. This is, this is the intent to put money towards the purchase of a new loader. This is not specifically for the purpose of a new loader.
Would the balance be raised and appropriated, borrowed, or transferred?
What's the amount of the balance?
I don't know, depending on which one, what it goes with.
That's the issue I have with this article.
But for, for the warrant, you can. That's all I'm saying, for the warrant, for the motion, it needs to be specific. This is just for posting.
We're not writing a motion tomorrow. We have, we have to get the piece of paper on the building tomorrow. That's, that's the whole point. We're not writing a motion that would read on the floor all the way-
No, the motion is what needs to be specific and call out-
I, I think that these should be two separate articles. I think you should be transferring that money-
I had them as two separate and then the powers took them off.
I would agree with that too.
I, I think that it should be written that the highway department should have the amount transferred to, towards a stabilization to be used towards the purchase of a loader. Then article, the next article underneath it should be for the purchase of brand-new blah, blah, blah loader, offset by article blah, 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 with a trade-in agreement of blah, blah, blah.
If you remember on last Thursday, I had that.
I know you did, and that's the way it should be. We've gone through this before where it wasn't divided. It was specifically the highway department, which we are voting on to transfer more money because that article was written incorrectly and then the motion was read wrong. These are, these should be divided, absolutely. You're talking about a transfer and then a purchase.
And a purchase.
And they should be divided. And I agree with John. It should be open-ended without that hydraulic thing so that he has the flexibility to buy whatever piece of machinery he wants when it comes down to those quotations. You know, I did, I did the research with the quotes that I saw from Tom. There was literally, he says twelve hundred or whatever it is, I saw a two thousand dollar
Fourteen sixty.
difference. I don't think that that's a big difference between one and another.
No.
If you take out those two extra parts that he added.
And that's, that's the whole reason that the board made the decision because it was not fourteen, it was twenty.
But having said that, if we leave this this way and he doesn't make the purchase, this money sits in limbo. It's not purposed. It could be used for whatever. We have to purchase, purpose this money.
Is that something you could sit there and do again at the eleven dollar to, to split it or?
Sure.
I mean, if you want me to put a hold on the floor and make a secondary motion to split this in half, we can discuss that before the meeting. But I definitely think that this is wrong to be displayed this way so that the town is led to believe that there's two things going on in one article. Some people may think it's okay, but we've had that experience with it. That's my opinion since I've been on-
But you do want the, the auction money to go towards offsetting the price-
Correct.
Purchase price of the new loader.
Correct.
If the quotes are accurate now that they already have, why isn't there a price for the loader in here?
See, that's-
Because nobody would say cat, Volvo, cat, Volvo, so.
No paperwork, no nothing. All we, all we get is emails and, and hearsay of this price and this price and this size.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, but if you're able to compare it to definitively know that you have like a two thousand dollar difference or fourteen hundred or twelve hundred dollar difference, don't you have the quotes with the numbers?
No, I don't, no.
So shouldn't that be, shouldn't that be available and be on here? Because wasn't, didn't you guys vote at the last meeting to write the article so it was more specific so people knew what they were voting on specifically? If, if anything, I think it's more vague now than it was last week.
Dario first had one fifty to one fifty-one three because he added, uh, two thousand parts or something like that. So again, it was just for posting purposes, but then it got changed. We met on Wednesday night, it got changed Thursday.
But isn't that why they then got it taken off?
Got put back on.
But we didn't have the, we didn't have the access to this conversation the last time we were all in this room.
Exactly.
So we didn't have these opinions fly through the air.
And, and the board didn't either. And still, I would like to sit here and say, here's two things. Here's the quote for this one, here is a quote for this one. But still, it, it-
So why don't we just do two articles?
Like Becky says, within one day, it goes from good one day, bad the next day, then we're up the next day and we're done. You can't keep doing this.
So why don't we?
Want to do A and B?
Two, no, two articles. Take the fourteen nine thirty from the auction-
Very simple, transfer.
And put that into-
Stabilization.
Capital stabilization. Highway, towards purchase.
Towards the purchase of a loader.
And then we do another article. I don't care if we have a sum of money.
Difference.
Again, this is for posting, a sum of money-
Then that-
To purchase a new loader.
That motion has to come from you.
I can do that.
Okay. With whatever machine you three departments agree upon, this has nothing to do with FinCom at this point, but you've got to make sure that you're on the same page for the same amount so that it's clean at the meeting. It's got to be clean.
Now, I wasn't a part of this conversation, so correct me if I'm wrong, but last week, was it Thursday, I believe, after Dario rewrote the article, you guys met or Madeline or somebody, some conversation went on in the article.
The board, that, that was one of the issues the board did not meet.
So who took, but it was-
Decisions made by people that didn't have the authority to make it.
Who took the article off?
Dario.
Dario.
Okay. So it decided to be taken off because there wasn't enough information?
Correct.
So have we gotten more information since it was taken off?
One, one of the issues you have to realize is that one member of the board does not have the authority to take anything off. It has to go through the board.
No, but wasn't, didn't you, wasn't it you, Becky, you weren't too there? I believe Madeline was there.
I was there, Madeline was there.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a board of selectmen's meeting, actually.
I, I wasn't there though, I'm just saying if, so it wasn't decided to take it off?
It, it wa-
It was decided by among the three people that had the conversation, yes, but not, John was at work.
It was decided to-
John got an email saying, this is what we're going to do.
It was decided to take, be taken off because, and then go with the, the local contractor if we need his services for snow removal and then till everybody can get their ducks in a row and then do it in May with a solid number.
But you're saying now that there was no authority to take it off, so then why wasn't the article that was taken off put back on?
That's what we're here tonight.
Well, that's not the same article.
No, it's not the same article.
It's not.
Because everybody wanted it changed. So again, I don't care what goes on, you just need to have a warrant that's posted.
Okay, so let me just, I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I'm just trying to understand us. So you guys voted to put the article on knowing Dario wrote it?
Yeah.
With the specifications in it?
We were just going to take off the hydrostatic transmission.
Okay, so however that was. So that was submitted and then last Thursday, when the conversation was decided to take it off, was taken, that shouldn't have happened, the conversation to take it off.
Well, the conversation could happen, but, but the-
So then theoretically, shouldn't the article that was written the way you guys all agreed on at the board of selection meeting, shouldn't that be the article that's on here right now?
Yes. Basically, yes. Because it was on and it was off, but it shouldn't have been taken off, but the board had voted on the- had voted on the.
The way Dart wrote it.
The way it had done, but then again, Dario knows, you know, you go from a Tuesday to the following Tuesday, the prices change five times, the quotes change.
Right, but my point is if, if in terms of a public meeting, like you said, the only thing that was decided on was the way it was written specifically last week.
Yes.
So that should be on there.
And, and the, the information for the auction money to go towards it.
Correct.
Right.
We're gonna put that in the article.
Correct, so that with the specifications are what should be on there.
Yes. That, that has to be before, like Becky says, this is just for warrant purposes. When we get to the town meeting, that article has to be put for the purchase of CAT five thirty B, model number blah blah blah, for the price of this minus the trade-in value for a total of this.
That's the motion.
Right, the motion.
No, but the article that should be on here right now should be the one that was not supposed to be taken off.
It should either be that one or tonight, they have the power to vote it off.
Correct.
One or the other.
But they should be, but that should be what's being decided on, not this.
Yes, because this is very different than what I saw.
But everybody's in agreement that the auction money is gonna go to offset?
That's what we all, we voted on that.
Yes.
That's all we were prepared to vote on. We didn't even know the loader was on.
And Dario said he had that in his calculations from capital, that the fourteen nine thirty was gonna be on.
Well, that was the way he had written the article, but then we, I was told, because I wasn't in the conversation last week, that it was taken off and now, so, yes, when he, when, as far as I knew, it was gonna be taken off and then, you know, the article the way it was.
I mean, it makes sense, put fifteen grand towards it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That was my understanding.
To lower the expenses, I mean. So you, we'll do one article for the auction money to, into capital stabilization and then we'll do, vote to transfer, raise and appropriate the whole nine yards for the purchase of a new loader.
With the specifics? Not with, not the specifics.
Not for the warrant.
Not for the warrant.
A new loader. If you want to do one fifty, is everybody comfortable with a hundred fifty?
I don't think you should put any price in.
We don't have to put a price.
Because that's in his motion.
Right, we don't have to put a price.
Right.
It's good to put a price if you have it, because it does compel people to come out.
But you should also in the second article say that the number fourteen thousand will be coming up.
Oh yeah, that, that'll be.
That was easy.
Yeah, I think you have to. You know, with this size amount of money.
But it shouldn't be worded just raise inappropriate.
No.
It should be worded raise appropriate, borrow and transfer. Right? Because I don't wanna wait till next summer in order to get a loader if he needs it this winter, right? So if we do raise and appropriate, that locks us into the next, because the tax rate's already been set. That locks us into the next budgeting year, right, which is July.
How were we originally planning this? Wasn't this gonna come out of stable, out of free cash?
No, it was raise and appropriate. Raise and appropriate.
Raise and appropriate is the way it was written. And capital planning meeting last week, I mentioned that to Tom, that that locks him out of this year. Even if it's approved, we can't do anything because we don't have the money.
And I mentioned that to Dario on the phone. The funds aren't available if you raise and appropriate because the tax rate's been set. He's, I don't know about that.
Loader one thirty-two, two seventy, free cash. Dario, Neri?
That's after the fact.
That was the second one, the first one, that was after the fact, but the first one was the reasonable.
Yes. Yeah, Ashley's right on that.
So which one am I supposed to be looking for?
Take your pick.
Final number for the higher loader is one thirty-one eight seventy after the transfer.
I'm sorry, I just have to say, you know, this is a high dollar idol for a very important piece of equipment for the town that is going to last a very long time. Twenty years, I don't know. The numbers have been changing. I don't think anyone here is sure or has seen anything that is comparing apples to apples to apples across the quotes. I think there needs to be one more sit-down between capital, I think FinCom ought to be part of that, selectmen highway. Are we looking at apples to apples across these pieces of equipment so that we truly understand what the numbers are?
How long's the guarantee on these things? Both the same for both machines?
And that's my point about looking and making sure with apples to apples, not only the dollars.
You said the last twenty years, how long's the guarantee on this thing?
Not only the dollars, but intangibles like warranties, cost of replacement parts and that type of thing, so that we do make the best decision for the town. I'm not saying it shouldn't be on, on the special town meeting, we need the piece of equipment, but to sit here and pull a number out of our head.
Cat, the cat is bumper to.
You know, you can read off numbers. The question is, are the numbers apples to apples with all the caveats and what's in the equipment, what's not in the equipment and so forth? And I need, I think, we need to sit, sit down with a sheet, sheets of paper that compare all these so we can ask questions and make sure we understand we've got apples to apples.
I, I can send a spreadsheet out tonight, I got everything I need.
Okay, you bet, we're gonna do two articles on number six then, split it.
Two arts.
My two cents.
What's the guarantee on this?
Depends on if it was made on a Wednesday or a Monday. You don't know, you don't know. One of them is three-year unlimited hours, that was on the one that we're not looking at anymore. The other one is one year bumper to bumper. The other one, I believe, is one year or fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, so your twenty-year theory could be a year or three years.
It's a one-year warranty.
The warrant book could probably be five years.
I understand. We got twenty-three at the last one, I'd say we're doing pretty good.
No, that's good.
Yes, I don't, I don't foresee it's not.
Okay, okay, okay. Let's get back to business. Everybody on board? We're gonna split this into article, two articles, let's move on.
What's the dollar amount?
Article seven. Ten thousand dollars street lighting, street lighting maintenance. Anybody have an issue? John? No? FinCom?
Uh, yes.
Jerry?
Yes. We voted yes for article seven.
I thought you said yes, we have a issue. Okay, thank you very much.
Eight are legal?
Ten thousand dollars are legal and number eight.
Yes, free cash.
Nine, two thousand dollars O, excuse me, ambulance OT.
Now, we said yes, but I think FinCom wants to pass.
I, I think we need to pass over that. The way we were looking at it is that he's asking for money. Did he say in his meeting that he was gonna be sure before the May, May transfer time of the year?
He wasn't sure. He, he's above his, his call volume right now, but.
Right, and that was why he said yes originally. But then tonight, we had a question. Is it, is it gonna impede his workload? Is he gonna overspend, in other words, is he gonna go into a deficit?
I can't answer that.
Yeah, it's hard to.
I would.
I think he's trying to be proactive and saying, let's put it in there so I don't get into trouble. But until you get to those last, you know, few months of the fiscal year, you really don't know what. We could have no snow for two months and then we could get eight storms in February.
Well, the recommendation from FinCom is to transfer at the end of the year.
Jerry, you can go back.
So, you know, you wanna pass over it or?
Well, Adam explained it to us as a board that it was to cover, based on the amount of call volume he's had this year in comparison to other years, and the trend seems to be continuing. He's gonna run short.
He's short before May.
Right, so he wants to get ahead of the curve and say, hey, I want this money upfront. A lot of that money gets reimbursed to the town anyway when the insurance company pays over it, but his call volume has been exceedingly high. And he expects that to continue based on the trends he's seeing. And I, I'm not gonna knock somebody down for looking at the future and say, hey, based on what I'm seeing right now, I'm gonna be out of money.
So does FinCom have any questions other than? So we, we are, we are meeting the night before the special and we will re-vote. We can't vote tonight because we're not in session.
We're, we're gonna leave it on anyway, so even if, if your recommendation is counted to that, that's, that's the thing.
Well, I'll have a chance to talk at the town meeting if we get to that point, so it's not.
Ten, twenty-four grand, landfill removal vegetation and stabilized banking fund to cover the additional costs that face the worst, worst warrant landfill on South Street.
So now the board had voted to keep it on.
And we voted to pass over that because we had questions.
And from what I understand, it, would this end out, would this close out that one phase that?
It should, yes. That, the, the work in engineering, yes.
But were we led to believe that there wasn't, this, this is already something that was bid, that was, this was a project in motion and this is additional cost.
Yeah, they came in much higher than anticipated, the bids.
So the question I think was raised in our, in our meeting was, was, were we quoted one in the amount and then, then they came back and said, we need more money? Or was there not a quotation or how did that process go?
I don't think there was a hard quotation.
No.
It was just a figure that was thrown out. And when they actually got into doing the work, it came in to be.
Much higher.
Much higher than anticipated.
The board itself has a spreadsheet on the five companies that bid on this job. See, get lazy, get a copy and explain everything. At twenty-four thousand, it's basically engineering, that completes the project. There's a spreadsheet on it.
This is to complete where we already started and.
It's been long.
Spent money to get to where we are today, so.
And then this is complete.
And this supposedly closes out everything.
Keep down that. Eleven, seven hundred and fifty dollars, there is a step increase due to Board of Health Secretary that goes along with the pay scale and the bylaws. I don't think there's any controversy there. Any questions? Okey-dokey. Twelve, twenty-five thousand dollars a server. We've all had plenty of discussion regarding this. We have no backup right now for our system and, you know, as you said Barry, you know, when you, when you looked at that, you know, you can see, you know, prices of servers are fifty thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. We, we have a very small need that we have, obviously, that some of money isn't needed to do, but we do need to have some sort of backup before we really have an issue.
All I would just like to say is from the last two meetings to today, when I got this, this has turned around from being an assessor's problem to now being a server's problem. So how does this affect the assessor's office who had a severe issue, emergency, three weeks ago and now it's become just a generic server for the building?
It addresses Rachel's issue immediately and then also it has the opportunity for the rest of the town offices to build out on that.
Okay, because as, as it was explained to us in our meeting with her, that she has sensitive.
Yep.
Equipment and she also has a program that's outdated. So it means that there's a lot of work that's gonna have to happen for her to transfer system information from one old program to a new one. So I just want to make sure that this, if, if, is, it doesn't say anything about the assessor's office here. So if the assessor's office comes back and says, by the way, I need forty grand to complete what I need to have happen in my office, where's she gonna get that money?
No, that, that's not.
This incorporates not only hers, but the whole building.
It addresses what she was very concerned with immediately. And then gives us the option of, of actually having the other departments jump on board.
So what you're saying is potentially the twenty-five thousand dollars could go towards her specific need at the front end?
Well, getting a.
No, no, hers, hers was like ten something.
But that was basically a Band-Aid and it then still had no backup for, it was a temporary fix for her. So instead, well, let's, let's take care of the temporary fix plus gives the option of having the other departments have access to go on the equipment so they can have the same service she has.
The way I understood it, and maybe unless I misunderstood, is there was a smaller option and like a larger option. And there was a smaller one that would have been, I suppose, just her office. It's the same thing that fixed the immediate problem.
And would have benefited her, but her only.
Right, the larger one is only gonna specifically address her issue to begin with, but it's a larger size, so it'll be able to branch off when needed to the other departments. That's what it was, as opposed to buying that and then if the other departments in the long run need to replace theirs, you'd have to buy something new. So in this case, you just buy the bigger one to begin with and then when the time comes, they'll have access to it. That's how I understand it.
I, I'm clear about the, I want you to understand, I'm clear about the equipment. What I'm saying to you is not knowing what she's up against with what she has in there. If it fails, is this money gonna be allocated towards her being able to fix her problem? We're assuming that she's just gonna be, very easily gonna be able to transfer all that information. What if it doesn't? Now she's out, we spent a bunch of money, she's out, her information. I mean, I, I don't think I have to speak for anybody in this room. If you work on a computer, you know what that's like when everything is lost.
There's nothing, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball in front of me. Say here's a server's gonna crash from out, right?
I, I just wondered if, why this wasn't.
The work's gonna have to be done regardless of what we do. The only option this gives us is it supports the infrastructure of the town building saying now all offices eventually will have access to the structure. Whether we have to add another, piggyback another server off of it in order to handle all the volume, I don't know yet. This will handle her needs with expansion to other offices. Whether it's total expansion to all offices or not, I can't answer that question.
But that's not what I'm asking you, John. What I'm saying is if her information fails and this company comes back and says, we need another fifteen thousand dollars to fix your problem in the assessor's office, is that attached to this article?
No.
If it's not, then all that money is gonna be used towards what?
For creating the server to give her the available usage and storage.
So then she'll have another emergency in her office, but it won't affect anybody else.
If her server dies tomorrow, right, you can still get at the information regardless, right, unless it's, it blows up and burns up, right? But any, any, a server is basically a big hard drive, right? Anybody can recapture that information that knows how to do it, right? You can send it out and have the discs right on it and recreate it and re-input it. Whether the formatting's gonna be the same or not, can't answer that question right now.
Thirteen, transfer a B grant, you know, control, you know, control regionalization. Pretty straightforward, any issues, John? Fourteen.
Hold on, hold on. So with regard to that, there's just a little logistic thing. The line name has to be changed because that line doesn't exist in the budget, in the current budget.
I'll speak with the accountant, she's a little titled up, so.
You just have to make sure we're putting it into the right line, okay?
Article fourteen addresses the dispatch communication sorry line. It's just a transfer to cover the warrant share of the roughly regional emergency communication. Any issue, John? I'm here. Harry?
We had a couple of questions.
Yeah, what, what period of time does that cover?
From November first to June thirtieth.
Okay, so it covers the rest of this fiscal year.
And it should be maybe knocked down to, it's, it's like we went to eighty-five, but it was eighty-three and change, but it should be knocked down to around seventy-five if he gets that nine-one-one grant, which he's been successful thus far, so.
For the record, we voted to, to, go ahead with that article, Mark? We just had a question, that's all.
Dokey. Fifteen, three-hundred-dollar camera. For something so small, there should be a lot of discussion about this.
Yeah, I agree.
This was voted last week, and then during the conversation, got taken on, so...
Well, currently, she's used eighty-one percent of a budget of ninety-eight hundred dollars. And she has two hundred and seventy-seven dollars that's out there waiting to be paid. My question would be, if the Board of Assessors were here, would be, why did you approve a two-hundred-dollar flagpole when you needed a three-hundred-dollar camera? It seems like a misappropriation of funds to be buying a flagpole. That's not what the expense account is set up for. It's, it's set up for office expenditure, not a flagpole.
That's a discussion we're gonna have to have with them because the board had concerns, same thing.
It should come out of her expense line. So she can put it on the special if she wants to, but we said no. We said we should pass over that whole article.
Because my personal feelings would look like without, I'm just looking at the camera. I'm not looking at the background of the expense account and the flag and this and that. But when we had people here, some people showed up, some people didn't show up. Rachel from the assessor's office did come down. She explained the reason why she wanted it, without getting into, "I don't have the money because I bought a flag." That wasn't the point of discussion at the meeting.
Oh, she didn't tell you that?
Yes. But it was explained to her that the summer seems to be her less busy season. So they are out doing inspections in this now, that if they had the camera, all the pictures that they took over the next three or four months during the winter, they would not have to go out again in the spring and redo. That's how it was basically explained to, to the board. To me, it made sense. Why go do a job twice? And, you know, to be quite honest, Article one, Article two. This was our special town meeting. Twenty-two articles later, I think it's really kind of absurd to spend this...
So let's finance recommend it. Go out and procure the camera out of their office expenses now, and then come to you guys for a rat later in the year?
She wouldn't need a rat. She could use, she could use the transfer system that we have in place.
But she would still have to come to FinCom.
She's still gonna have to come to FinCom and Select, because she ran out.
I mean, her logic behind getting the camera?
She's going to run out at eighty-one percent already used after six months.
Correct.
I mean, she, I don't know how she'll get through the rest of the year period. But if you can't afford the camera, then you don't buy one until the next season and you put in for it. That's what everyone else has been made to do. I'm not so sure why we would bend that rule now. The reason that I was an advocate for her in the beginning was because she walked into an office that was antiquated. So she's, she's walking into systems that aren't working. She's working, walking into equipment that doesn't work. So that's why I was trying to advocate for her, but I'm seeing how they're spending. And then when I heard this flagpole thing, well, if you know you need a, a camera, why are you buying a flagpole? That's not how they even do their job.
We, we have flags in this office that if somebody wants to use a flag, we could sit...
So that's why I'm just saying, if it was me and I was a selectman, I will be happy as a FinCom person to go to her and say, "Return the flagpole. Then you'll have the money for the camera." That's what I would say to her and to her board.
So you want this off and let her go through? She needs a rat, she needs a rat.
Well, she had some good rationale behind buying the camera.
I guess it is.
Billie Gallo, behind it, I don't know. She says, "The Lewis Pictures are about ten years old of what she has on property right now, which is antiquated." And I don't know if we're other compliance in the assessor's office as we speak or not.
We still will be. For four months, we will be.
I can't answer the question because I'm not an assessor, right? So, I mean, I've gotta trust in the judgment of the people or the positions around here to do what's right, right? I, we, we as a board can't watch over every department that's out there. I mean, there's elected officials, there's hired officials that are supposed to be running these departments. We need to help them, right? And I think we mentioned that to Tom last time. Next time we go through this loader thing, or a fire truck or whatever, capital planning should be more involved and tap into that resource to help you get the information we need so we can put it all together. I don't have that luxury right now. Do I think it's a three-hundred-dollar camera on an article on a special town meeting is kinda off the wall?
It wastes our time.
I walked in here last week saying twenty-some odd articles. This is ridiculous for a special town meeting, right? But it is what it is, right? So I have no problem, right?
Well, it's not, it is what it is. You can say no to it, right?
No, I'm just saying the position that we're in right now with all the articles is, it is what it is.
But I, I think the point I'm trying to make is, you know, we were told that this, this made sense. Get a jump on the work in this, and we sit here and we, we spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars like nothing, and we get bogged down on a three-hundred-dollar camera.
We have our recommendation.
As, as a taxpayer, I, I agree, you know, on these articles, but you, three selecting cannot, you can say, "No, we're not gonna put these articles in here." So for you to tell us that they're in here, we're also relying on you as selectmen to stop this insanity because that's what everybody does. I want a new camera, I want a new flagpole, I want this, I want that. We need a new loader, we need stuff for the fire department, okay? You gotta take priorities. Otherwise, I've been here thirty years, the town's going backwards. It ain't even going forwards in thirty years. So you have to stop all this craziness. That's on you guys. And, and I'm glad, you know, somebody like Barry that, that's trying to pay attention to all this because it, it is, the people are gonna just take that money? And all the money that gets voted in here, guess what? By the time at the end of the year, it's spent on fifteen, fifteen hundred other different things that nobody knows about. And, and, and the taxpayer keeps getting it, and now we can't even have a new grant for the senior center. We can't even have a loader. This whole thing is pathetic. So, I mean, if, if, if you, if you as a selectman would just rip this up and say, "Okay, we're not gonna, that's fine with me as a taxpayer," except for the loader, okay, serve priorities, okay? But the rest of it is just not, it's been going on for years, and that's on you selectmen to stop it. And, 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 you know, I could sit here and say all I want, but I'm not a selectman, I can't stop it. So, but my opinion as a taxpayer, if you get rid of half of these things, and, and that's fine with me, you know? Because, you know, so...
Okay, thank you, Brian. What are you gonna do, John? On or off? Article fifteen is off. Sixteen, transfer of ten thousand dollars from expense account to salary account. Don't really know a lot of specifics, but this was on the recommendation of the town accountant.
At the, at our meeting, the board had voted to, to hold it till we heard further from Parks, but then we had that conversation and... Gonna put back on?
Back on.
Barry, we can do this in May, can't we? Because we're not gonna be doing come and spawn stuff until...
Do you want, I'll give you the bridge version. This is housekeeping. All it is, is three years, three years ago...
There was an error.
When we asked the Parks Department to review their budget, they didn't come in for review, first of all. So we put the book together, Madeline and I both looked at it, we went through it, everything. Lorena looked at it, we were all clean on it. It never occurred to Madeline that we had put salary and expense and expense in salary. So as the books went forward in history, now it looks as though it was one line in the wrong place. So what she did was she accounted for it by saying, "Well, I know that that's wrong," so she fixed it. But she didn't tell us, and she didn't tell the assessors, I mean, the, the Parks Department. So for three years, we thought we were right. And then she realized through her year-end this year, by the way, I got this wrong, and so has the FinCom. So we're doing housekeeping here. We're putting the money where it's supposed to be, so it's absolutely correct.
That's basically what it is, is housekeeping.
It's a correction. That's all it is.
So is it warranted that it go on as an article?
Yes.
Any problem, John?
Nope. How many years are we gonna try to address that?
Three.
Okay, seventeen and eighteen just came in today.
We apologize.
Seventeen, eighteen, basically the same subject. The senior center director is asking for an increase in hours. Article seventeen increases to three hours. Article eighteen increases to seven hours. You see the difference in the, uh, dollar amounts that each increase will take? But from what I understand, that this used to be a forty-hour position.
Yes.
And when somebody recently had, had taken it, that the individual did not wanna put in that, so it was cut back to thirty-three, and it's basically trying to get it back to, she doesn't have enough hours to do what she's trying to accomplish down here. So it's basically either we go for a three-hour increase, we bring it from thirty-three to thirty-six, or we go from a, to a seven-hour increase that brings it back to a forty hours. There's no additional across. It benefits because it's already a benefit position.
Yeah, um, she really needs the forty hours. She's there all the time, she doesn't put in for the hours. There's so much more going on at the senior center than there was when Armin was there.
Right. You said go back to Mr. ...
And she really, you know, there aren't too many places around that don't have a full-time director. We had voted it on the COA months ago. Barry, you were at that meeting. And we all voted that she should have a forty-hour position. And we all feel that way still, that she needs to have a forty-hour position.
I'll tell you what, well, you, you wanna go with Article eighteen?
Please.
Up to forty, and obviously it's up to the people at the town meeting. She's gonna sell and justify, you know, her increase. Like you said, I think there's a, a very good track record of this is what it used to be. It was cut back, and now it's basically just kinda extorting the service. So you wanna scratch seventeen, put on eighteen, John?
What's FinCom?
Uh, we're, we're voting to pass over this till the May budget season, or to go on two thousand twenty, onto that schedule. To put it on now in the middle of the season is not right. We don't have a full, historically, we've never had as many people at a special as we've had at an annual. The annual is when we pass a budget. The annual is when we tell the taxpayer what they're paying for their employees. We don't come in the middle of the year and add people without the town knowing. This is a back-askwards way to do this. We don't support this being done this way. We're not questioning the hours nor the value of the employee because they haven't come before us. Nobody came, nobody came to us to say, "Why, when, how?" And at the meeting I was at when they voted to give her the hours, I warned them that this was the wrong way to do this. We're not questioning the value of it or the position. We're questioning the motive and the method.
And I think that's a board concern. Like I say, we got the email which was received this morning, January second.
There's no explanation. To come tonight for an explanation when she has to post this tomorrow at nine o'clock is absurd. Period. So...
John?
Sure. Can you wait till May? I mean, personally, I think there's a lot of things we need to, I think the senior center is getting run very well right now. I'm not doubting that deserves a forty-hour position, or a thirty-six hour, or whatever that is. But there's other things in the senior center that we need to address as well, as staffing of the, you know, we have nobody qualified to operate the lift for the van, so we can't really use the van to go out there.
Almost there.
I think there's a few different issues that need to be addressed as far as car management.
And I am trying to address them all.
And I support it, but I think, you know...
And also there's a regionalization of transportation that I've been attending meetings for, trying to get not just the seniors, but everyone transportation from the Orange. Hopefully it's coming. There's a lot of meetings and grants and things, and we have the hours.
And that takes time, right? If we could wait till May, I appreciate it. And I understand that it's a lot of hours going after the grants and stuff like that, but I think we really need to look at the whole council aging and say, "Okay, what do we need to do for driver, for the van? You know, we need to get the center more accessible to people that can't get there on their own."
I have two drivers that are ready to take classes. We're just trying to find one that aren't in Boston. All the classes are in Boston. It's usually every two years, and they just get them in where this past year, so we're gonna have to go further out. So, um, we are trying to find classes. It shouldn't be much longer. I have three drivers that are gonna take the classes, so we'll have backup drivers. And the van is ready to go.
You know, we don't really care, so...
Yep.
And, and I hope you understand, Sharon, that this is not aimed at anybody. It's just the process. I think everybody is very pleased with the way it's done, and we all know you want three hours.
But we're not telling you not to go after those grants either.
No, I know. Yeah, but we're strapped down there, and, um, we don't have a lot of help. We used to get four and five cats for about people. We only get two now. One can't work in the kitchen, so a lot, we're all working there. So it makes it really hard to get paperwork done in the meetings and, um...
So I think we go through the budget process, get to Barry, what your requirements are, get it onto your budget for the coming, coming year, and if it's reasonable, I will most definitely support it.
Well, can I, can I say something to that, please? I've had several conversations with Sharon about this. And I would suggest in the future that the select board either be at their meeting or they come here for a select board meeting on the agenda. Because what happens is their board makes decisions for Sharon. She may request things, or she may suggest things to do, but it's the board inevitably who makes the decision. So having said that, one of the things we talked about at a selectment meeting last year was the fee schedule. Now, I've been told, I don't know if I'm, so correct me if I'm wrong. I've been told that that fee schedule has not gone forward with regard to raising fees. So the option for Sharon to be able to actually earn money through renting out the property, then using that core piece of money that, let's say she says, "You know, this week, if I just had ten extra hours, I could hire such and such to do this job for me." That's a bill. She has that in her expense. It doesn't hit salary. It hits her as a bill. So she hires, let's say, Armin for ten hours 'cause he can wax that floor a special way. So it becomes a bill, not a salary. But if she had that capital in her, in her, in her account that she got from fees, but, but the, but the board has made those decisions for Sharon.
Right.
So she can't react to it. So I, that's why I'm empathetic to her as an employee. But, but this has to, this has to fall in the way we do our policies with doing government.
Okay.
You know, that's how we feel on FinCom.
Seventeen, eighteen, huh?
So, we're, we're for you, we're just...
I love that we take off, you pulled it to a group last week.
A hundred thousand would go, one person, double ten, four.
Do we need to re-vote that?
We can do a vote, yeah, yeah.
I mean, if we voted yes last week, and now we're not, I think we should...
No, that was off, that was part of the vote, that we took it off. No, that was off, that was part of the vote, that we took it off last week.
It was, it was us.
Yep, yes, Ken was here.
So there's nothing that we approved at the last meeting, that's been left off of this?
Nineteen, five thousand dollars, you vote it nine? Mary?
We voted to pass only because, for clarification, that's off. We will re-vote next week, but Dave, you had a question about technology.
Yeah, it was just a question of what the five thousand dollars was for.
That was for Northeast IT again to come in, when they did some initial work to see what the deal was with the server. And Conservation had an issue with their computer. We didn't really fund it that much this year again, because this is new for us. But, I mean, we can.
So will this fix some things?
Yeah.
This five thousand?
Oh, yeah, 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 we have a running, it's four sixty-seven a month for Northeast IT. That's for our cloud backup, and so we do have some expenses in there.
Just wasn't clear by just saying five thousand, in terms of what we were going to get for it.
So what's everybody's thought on, what if the camera came out of that?
Well, I was going to, after you had that conversation, we did set up a technology line, we did set up a computer line. I'm not sure why we wouldn't take that money for the camera.
Is anybody against it, or, I mean, take it off on one article, but I mean, that would still leave sufficient.
And just let, let the assessors know that, to put in the request for the tech, for the technology.
Against the technology.
Is everybody okay with that?
I mean, that's why we created the line originally anyway, it was to be able to start.
Because my assumption is.
But it's still kind of in line with.
Right, and my assumption, it's a digital camera.
Yep.
With warranty, guarantee, the whole nine yards, so it's equipment. So I don't, I don't have a problem with that. But we'll, you know, that's, if you say that, then on Wednesday, we'll re-vote.
Okay.
Okay.
But is the board okay with that?
You did me.
Huh?
I said you did me.
So is the, the board okay with that?
But Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, for the record, that please make a memo to the board of assessors that that was the recommendation, so that they know that that's going forward, so she doesn't think we just passed over her article.
Yep.
How much money do we have left of that, fine, you know, Barry?
Technology?
Technology line?
I think, it hadn't been really spent at all.
But I know you're looking for a computer, right?
Yeah.
Still have bought that computer that I worked on?
No, because it's not available anymore.
Well, a new computer for FinCom and the cameras, it's probably talking around fifteen hundred dollars. Total.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's off.
Yeah, twenty.
No money involved, that would be, I don't seem to, me personally, think there's going to be little of any opposition to this. I think the people in town have seen how it affects, maybe not them personally, but I think everybody in town knows some way that it's been affected by solar, so that is.
Can, just, if you can do it in an abridged version, can you just explain what this is about, what this is all about? Because I, I don't know anything about that.
Planning Board needs time to rewrite a bylaw as to what we allow size-wise and storage size. Because right now, there's no, nothing going on that would, based on what I know and meetings I've been, there's nothing to say now that these larger installations are coming in. We're creating more solar power than can be consumed right now. So the new solar facility are looking into putting battery storage as part of the solar fields. And it's also, there's no clear definition of what a buffer is between my property and the solar field, even though I'm not abutting a solar field, but I can understand those residents' concerns. What's happening is they're coming in and clearcutting the farm areas right to the line, right? Harvesting the timber, then the solar fields come in, and there's no, no buffer between the property lines.
One of the issues is if there was a pre-existing buffer, say a hundred feet of wood or something. Right now, they come right down to the property line. And the solar company say, hey, we didn't take it down. It was logged. We can't force them to put back a five-foot buffer.
The landowner who's looking for, because they're in arrears and taxes and stuff, so they're contracting people to come in and clearcut, and the solar people coming behind them, and lease the land off of them.
Yeah, okay.
Solar field land, so it's, to catch twenty-two?
That's, I like.
It's also connected environmental concerns.
Drainage, there's all kinds of stuff.
Environmental, hazardous materials, what's happened with these panels ten years from now, twenty years from now, and so forth.
So we need to give them time.
Right, they're basically looking to put A, the brakes on until bylaws can be addressed to address this, that. No new application, because from what I understand right now, we get another four or five.
Large. I think it's five.
Already, and everybody's trying to beat the, you know, you get the lawyers involved, you try to beat the deadlines and bylaw changes and this and that. So it's basically the solar people are fighting to shove it down the throat. And the town is saying, hey, we want a few minutes to step back and say, hey, what's the best way? Everybody involved. Because one of the issues now is, we've had a bar that's sit there, and he lives next to a gentle sloping hill that is covered with vegetation and trees. People come down every time it rains, floods his property, septic system is underwater. And the solar company says, it's not my problem. Well, it didn't exist before this facility went in, so it's somebody's problem. And I think that the people involved in this don't think it should be up to the homeowners sit there and have to dump out thirty thousand dollars, replace a septic system, because the guy clearcut forty acres of trees next to him.
No, instead of a lawn in their backyard, they have a swamp.
Right.
Because the water is not being absorbed by the vegetation, it's just running into the adjacent properties.
And the last one is the gym. We'll see how that goes, because my own concern here is, we were replacing the floor, but we don't seem to be addressing the issue that goes there in the first place. So I think there's going to be a lot of questions on the floor that night.
Now.
And that's a raise and appropriate, correct?
Well, that was going to be, that's our discussion. How is that going to be funded?
That's what the board wanted. They had their quotes in place, and I would assume they'd get the work done.
We've had, we've had this figure of a hundred fifty thousand dollars, but I have never seen one big piece of paper that documents that this work is going to be done for this amount of money. And like I say, if we're going to replace the floor, or replacing the issue that cut the floor in this position now, we're wasting money. I don't know, it's, it's very hard getting a system of school.
The school committee already approved it, so, I mean, we have to have a special force.
That was basically the only reason we had to have a special town meeting, was to reach the whole issue. Otherwise, the board, as everybody knows, made the decision, we weren't going to have one. Because if you don't get the people the opportunity to spend money, you can't.
David's been at a lot of school committee meetings that I have been at, and talking about the type of floor, you know, if they want wood floor, again, the wood floor is already buckled up there now, the current gym, you know. Can they look at a composite floor, something, so, I don't think, I don't know where they're at with.
So this board, basically, David has no information. That's all we have. We need a hundred fifty thousand dollars, we'll put it on there.
Yeah, yeah, representing the town and building something, the company they've had, looking at this and quoting on it, and I can get you some of their quotes, it does go back about five or six, five or six months, it predates me a little bit, but it is an organization that has done this type of thing. They have made some cuts and some tests. Quite honestly, in terms of the cause, that, that seems to get passed over.
Yes.
And blamed on, blamed on just water. They do acknowledge that until they really get into this and take the floor up to the full extent of what may be there, is still to, is still to be seen. What this company has proposed makes sense. They are modifying the plans, the bid that will go out. They had to get the bid modified to cover alternate materials, not just wood. Because the argument was, and John brought it up, and I reinforced it, that if you just put wood back now, and they acknowledge, it's not dealing with the underlying groundwater problem, it just regenerates itself. So the bid will go out, I expect it will go out, covering alternate materials as well, which obviously would share a lot of it, shave the cost down. The estimate was one twenty-five to one fifty, they're going with one fifty on the high end. Once they cut into this floor, who knows?
So where's the money going to come from, once they cut in the floor, and somebody says, well, it's concussion, I have a ninety-six five to replace the issue before we put the floor, where's that money coming from?
That's right, I think you need to have, find out what the problem is, and lock in a contractor that he's going to fix the problem. If there's a perimeter drain problem, I mean, it could be another two hundred thousand, who knows? But I think, this doesn't make any sense to me, until you know what the problem is, and you can fix the problem.
Yeah, well, this was mandated by, once the school committee took a vote, we had no.
We have no requests.
Okay, I understand.
Put it on there, so until we have, we have no information from the school, so until we get to that point.
But what, but what I would like to say, Mark, is that it sounds like we have two options. If we take a loan for this project, then we take on more debt.
Yep.
If we raise and appropriate, it could bring the tax rate from eighteen fifteen to eighteen fifty.
Yep.
That said, we're spending money in this fiscal year for next year, which means then they come back to us with their enormous school budget, and we have another two dollars per thousand put onto the tax rate. We are not in a revale year that year, so therefore, the taxes will, by the way we spend, will go up. That's not, you can't offset, because there's no revale in that year.
You know, Dario always made that point, you know, time and time again, is, you know, what you spend here, down the road, somebody.
Right, so, my, my thought is that, you know, when we go into the meeting, before we go into that meeting, to have a working session, session meeting, to really look at how we have spent this money, and that free cash. If we have to make, if, if the loader, let's say the loader didn't go through, and Tom is now forced to spend ninety grand in snow and ice to pay for this other person to come in to do the work, we've got to have that money in free cash to cover that, all right? So, that could happen. There's, there's several scenarios, but if we're, this is the only place where I saw raise and appropriate, seemed like Dario took everything else out that was raise and appropriate. So if this goes forward that way, we just need to make sure people know option A and option B.
Mark.
Go ahead, Ash.
Just so you guys know, the school did come forward a couple times about this, there was last year or two. There's a lot of information we have, a lot of concerns we have. Unfortunately, because it's a special, and that's what happens with the specials, this stuff's not going to be presented, because we, our report wouldn't go on till May.
Right.
So I don't know if that's something that, you know, that's where I need the communication too, with capital and finance and like that, because there is, you know, we, we've asked a lot of these same questions, and we can, you know, pass on what we've gotten, or haven't gotten, and our concerns.
We probably have twice the information at this board, isn't it?
Right, so just in terms of, you know, moving forward, you know, those are some of the concerns and other underlying issues, and there's been some other testing.
This is our information.
Right.
They need a hundred fifty thousand.
Right.
But there's been no answered questions, no how many, how many times a question.
Right.
And chances are, it'll bring a lot of school members and get this hundred fifty thousand, boom, just like that.
That's the way it works, Mr. Chair.
Well, that's why I think it's important for all of us to be on the same page too, with all the information that's been presented, especially where it's been, you know, we found them last year too, and there was different estimates and different issues that came up, so.
This is what this question's quite a bit at the school committee meetings. By people not involved with the school committee in attendance, and there's a number of minutes rule right now. And it's like flooding your head against the wall. Even going from a wood floor to a composite type floor. And there was, it's like, why are you questioning? That's all we can do, is question, right? We can't, we can't influence their decision, right? They want an article out there, I mean, we're legally bound with this article out there, and they voted on it. Do I support it? I agree, we haven't done due diligence, we don't even know what the issue is yet. But yet, we're going to throw something over, an existing problem. I would say, go to more school committee meetings. Not that you're going to change their mind, but at least they'll present it, so. Express your concerns there.
Okay, folks, that's it.
Okay, so I'm going to take it from the top, just one more time. Article one's a yes, article two's a yes, article three is a yes. Four, we're passing on till May, till there's more conversation with the fire chief, Mal and FinCom, whomever. Five is a yes. Six is a yes, but that's going to be broken into two articles. The auction money earmarked to offset, then the next article will be written.
For the purchase.
For the purchase of a new loader, and then to utilize the fourteen nine thirty. Are we going to describe in this cat, vole, whatever, just new loader?
That would be the motion.
Right, okay. Street lighting, yes. Eight is a yes, nine is a yes, ten, eleven, twelve are yeses. Thirteen's a yes, but we're going to verify the wording on that, Barry, for the, for the line.
Yep.
Fourteen's a yes, fifteen is off, but we're going to purchase the camera. A memo will be sent, we'll purchase, if approved, take it out of the IT. Sixteen's a yes, seventeen and eighteen are off, and will be addressed in May. Nineteen is a yes, twenty and twenty-one, yes.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much, folks.
House on the last time, but you do have the, you're on there. There's. No, no. Thank you, Jared. So, I don't know, Mark, do you want to, you do have the redline version in your binder, that's the director's. But she also made some other recommendations in the email, like right on the article.
Tom, Tom, Tom?
Yep.
We're still in session. Oh, sorry. Guys, want to go ahead?
Yep.
We still have another couple things to take care of.
Okay, so, in her cover email, you know, she also suggests, and the other person will learn that this is correct, just clarifying language, maybe adding to the new course. She also has in here attorney's fees, we should keep, you know, have them send us a check, we can definitely look at the county, and we pull from that on, build the building separately. The board is all set with that. So I think, honestly, the last thing, because this is kind of theory and very publicated, I don't know if the board would be able to have our council work directly with their council.
I recommend, I think our council is heading in the right direction. And I think we just need to cross some Ts and dots and lines, finalize on this. But I think it's a document to cover our concerns, and the interest of the town.
Yeah.
And they're more familiar with these types of agreements.
I mean, you look at this, this is legal, Jared.
But this is, um.
Why we have the council.
This has also been adapted to the changing roles of the Control Commission also, so.
Which will continually change.
Absolutely, and they're on the cutting edge, and they do this quite often, so. All right, I'll get in touch with her tomorrow, and have her move forward with this.
So we need a motion for the vote?
Yep, please.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, you go.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to allow.
Town council.
Town council to continue their work on the host agreement for healing, and. Town council to continue their work on the host agreement for healing and.
And to work with them directly.
And to work with their legal department directly and come to finalization on the host agreement.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion, any none? Everybody okay?
Aye.
That's something that we need to get in place because we have, just like planning has solar, we have, um, marijuana.
We need to get those wrapped up.
Yep. Then, okay, they hunt tight.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn to executive session in accordance with GL Act thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A two three, to conduct strategy session preparation negotiations with non-union personnel or collective bargaining sessions to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation.
I'll second that motion. I need a roll call vote. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, folks. I'm going to executive.